To the afternoon session of the Board of County Commissioners meeting for July 2014, 15, 2025. So we had some unfinished business from this morning, which we are going to take up first. So let's get on to our, I don't remember the number, C.
R69, yes.
Sorry, just pulled it all out.
Good afternoon. Carrie Roberts, Purchasing Director. We are here to discuss a bid-award protest. It is IFB KM 25029, Ongoing and As Needed Guardrail/Handrail Installation and Materials. So we opened the bid on the 25th of February. We received three bids, one from C Slater Construction, one from Grading Bush Hog Services, and one from Southeast Highway Guardrail and Intenuators. We received a memo of a recommendation of award from Public Works to award to two vendors, Grading Bush Hog Services and Southeast Highway Guardrails. We received a protest on the 19th of March from Southeast. We denied that protest through the County Administrator's Office. There was additional information requested by Southeast, and then we denied it on the 4th, I'm sorry, the 22nd of April. The basis for the protest from Southeast is that they do not feel South, that, excuse me, slated Grading Bush Hog and Hog Services should be eligible because they did not bid on all items. Our response was that the bid clearly states that we can award to more than one vendor if found to be in our best interest. It also states that we reserve the right to reject any or all bids in whole or in part to award by any item, groups of items, total bid, or accept the bid that is most advantageous and in the best interest of the county. We denied the protest on the 22nd of April, and as a result, the protesters asked to come before you all. Our recommendation is that you uphold the decision by the County Administrator to deny the protest and to award the contract to both Grading and Southeast. That is the purchasing side. We have, Southeast is here, and they'd like to give a presentation as well.
Okay.
Carrie, have you set up timeframes?
I'm sorry?
Timeframes.
10 minutes, sir.
And are both sides going to take 10 minutes?
No, ma'am. Grading Bush Hog did not come today. The protest is not of their award to them as a company, it's our procedures, so they did not feel it was necessary for them to come.
Okay, thank you very much. Good morning, afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Elizabeth Vandenberg, and I represent Southeast Highway Guardrail and Intenuators LLC. I'm here today with Iliana Angel, who is the estimating and contracts administrator for Southeast Highway. She actually puts together the bids, so she has the best knowledge of that process, much more than I do. We're here today actually about protecting the integrity of Pasco County's procurement process. And by that specifically, we mean all of the vendors need to be on an even playing field. They need to start from the same position. And the problem that arose with this bid in particular was that no one was notified which items in the bid form were mandatory and which items were optional. So it created a situation where the other two vendors chose no bids on eight items, and my client bid on those eight items, and because of that, bidding on those items rather than a no bid, which is a zero entry in the calculus, created their bid tabulation that was $60,000 higher than it would have been had they entered no bid on all of those items, like the other two competitors did. And so when it came to, I'm sorry, I'm supposed to be going through this. So what we're disputing today is not really the dual award. We knew going in it could be awarded to more than one vendor, and we're completely fine with that. It was how the calculation was tabulated. So my client currently holds the contract for the county for guardrail. They've held it for the past three years. They noticed that this year, unlike the last bid form they submitted, there were, I believe, eight additional items added to the bottom of the bid form that were not there in previous years. And so again, for the procurement process to be fair and equitable, all of the parties need to be on a flat field. If one party is starting higher or lower, it's not equitable, and my clients, by not entering no bids for those items that the other two vendors entered no bids for, was actually placed at a disadvantage, strangely, even though arguably their bid was more responsive than the other two competitors who entered no bid amounts. And what resulted by virtue of them going through the form and entering a bid for every line item was that their bid actually turned out more, whereas the parties that refused to answer on several items ended up with lesser bids. So here's the bid form that Iliana completed, and she can explain to you a little bit about these items that were added to the bottom.
The items that we decided to bid on are materials only. We did not know that it was optional. When you bid as a prime contractor, you are supposed to bid on all items. If you do not have experience or can't do it for some reason, you will send requests or go to subs, and that's what they, that file is for. If you send it out to subs, they can choose whether to bid or not bid on the items. In the scope of work, they can. So that's why we bid on all of them. We wanted to bid as a prime contractor, and it was not specified that it was optional.
So you'll see as comparing these three vendors, Grading and Bush Hog Services, Southeast is there in the middle in the white column, and I think it's C Slater Construction, Inc. is in the rightmost blue column. And you'll see that Grading and Bush Hog and C Slater did not enter bids for those last eight items, whereas my client, Southeast Highway, believing that they had to, or their form wouldn't be accepted, bid in particular on item 38, $60,000. So all things being created equal, because the other two vendors entered no bids for those items, my client's bid for that particular item, which is handrail, should have been zeroed out or not counted, because what resulted was, in the bid tabulations, my client's bid came out $60,000 higher than it would have been had they entered no bid. So while we agree and acknowledge that the bid instructions did say that you could enter no bid on items, it was never specified which items those were. And the County Administrator has taken the position in his response to us that the form wouldn't have been accepted had we failed to bid on required items, but that would mean a scenario where trial and error. You leave some items blank, it's not accepted, you add them back in, it is accepted, but then you've submitted something that you don't necessarily feel is your full-balanced bid. So there needed to be clearer instructions, there needed to be items earmarked mandatory versus optional, and my client shouldn't have been penalized by $60,000 for bidding on something that did not have to be bid on at all. So again, this was a end result that my client ended up with an unbalanced bid by including the handrail when nobody else did. It was a game of chance, picking and choosing which items to bid on, which items not to bid on. It amounted to a rigged game at the end of the day. And I know how much this county prides itself in integrity, and in this instance, the integrity of the process was undermined by the fact that the instructions were not clear. So in the end calculus on all those items at the bottom in which the other two vendors entered no bids, you'll see that because my client put that $60,000 in there, their total tabulation came out to 265, 676, 25. Without that $60,000, had they entered no bid and had a zero in that column, their bid would have been 205,676, 25, making them by far the lowest bid. We also believe, but I cannot confirm because I did not ask the purchasing office or the administrator about this, but it appears to us that the reason it was dual-awarded is because those two first lowest bids were only $4,427 different. And so here, it certainly could make logical sense to dual-award, but if you do correct math and not count that $60,000 that my client bid on when its two competitors didn't, their bid would have been $205,000, which would have amounted to savings to the county. And when you're having to answer to taxpayers about where the money's going, I'm sure you would like to be able to represent to them, we accepted the lowest bid. And in this case, you didn't accept the lowest bid because my client's bid was artificially inflated by this non-required item. So these are the numbers had that item been conveyed to the bidders that it was not required. And clearly, my client's bid would have been by far the lowest without that item, had they entered a no bid like Grading and Bush Hog did.
How long does it bid? They've got a timer.
So the potential unrealized savings based upon this dual award, $57,789, that is the difference between the average of the two awardee vendors' bids minus Southeast Highway's bid without handrail. And again, you know, we're here today about maintaining the integrity of the process. Broward County recently did away with the same or a similar bid form that included those optional items. They no longer have those items on the bid form because they realize they do not need to be on the bid form. They're not mandatory items, and they're not used that much in the field. Pasco County has an opportunity here to maintain the integrity of its public contracts process by either rebidding this contract or re-adding it up. All we're saying is that $60,000 should not have been used in the bid tabulation. Thank you for your time.
That's your time.
Oh, that's your time. Okay. Commissioners, do you have questions?
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I know sometimes we've had different things when we kept other bids in place, picking some items, et cetera. Guardrail seems a little bit simpler to me, but if the bid was $57,000 without those items, it would have been hands down won by that, by this company. So I find a big gap.
Well, you know that we, so we went with two companies this time? So they did win. I mean, that we're, we have two companies that are getting the contract, so that's why I'm a little, you know, even if without that, they still would have been, they would, okay, they would have been number two, but we still have two companies now.
Yes, ma'am. The intent was always to award to multiple vendors, in this case, because we do have an abundance of work in this area, and this will allow the Public Works Department the flexibility of having more than one vendor available to them. Each individual project will be quoted out based on the actual items to be used on that project. So if it's a matter of cost savings, they'll look and see vendor A bid, if you add up their bid, it's $35,000. If you add up theirs, it's $37,000. All being the same, we would go to the lowest one for that quote, but the prices do have to match what they submitted in their bid.
So on the handrails, do we do that very often, the handrails?
That part I don't know, ma'am.
All right. So if someone bid no bid?
Yes, ma'am.
Let's say you have a job, and you put it out to the contractors, and someone didn't bid on a handrail. Is that what that was?
Yes, ma'am. In this case, since they are the only one that bid on that last item that they showed there, we would automatically have to use them for that item.
Well, then you're going to get the job that has the, you're getting all the jobs that have the handrails. So what's the problem?
Our point is just that the playing field wasn't even. It wasn't an apples-to-apples comparison.
Did you have the same instructions that they had?
Correct. Everybody had the same instructions, and those instructions were missed.
I'm not a lawyer, but you had the same instructions that they had, and if you, if there's a job with a handrail, you're getting the work because they didn't bid on it. So I think you're good.
Okay. I would just say, we've held the contract for the past three years, and I don't think we've ever turned down a job or been unavailable for a job. So I don't really understand the explanation that we need two vendors for availability purposes when we've never shown you all that we can't fulfill our needs, or your needs, under the contract.
Okay. Well, we have a county employee stepping up, Mr. Barrett Doe, and then Commissioner Waitman has a question.
Yes. Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Barrett Doe, Assistant Director, Public Works Department, over Operations and Technical Services. It's kind of a mix-and-match. If we have to repair a guardrail, it doesn't necessarily mean that there's a handrail associated with that. It just depends on the situation, if that helps kind of clear it up. So we use the different line items for whatever comes our way.
And there's a busted guardrail on Mary Jane.
We will check it out.
Needs to be fixed.
They put in a workbar on it again.
All right, good. Commissioner Waitman.
Thank you, Chair. Just something to note. So two-thirds of the vendors in this procurement no bid, or you bid. So obviously, I mean, did you ask the question? Do we bid them all? Do we not bid them all? But obviously, it tells me two-thirds of the participants, you know, had an idea of what to bid and what not to bid. I don't know why Southeast chose to fill out the line items the way that we did, or y'all did, but two of the three had an idea of how to fill out its price sheet.
Well, we haven't really been in that situation when you bid as a prime contractor, and you can choose when, what you want to bid or not.
Did you ask the questions during the bid process and get an answer and an addendum?
Yes, but that's the thing. If it was added by the county, we just assumed that it was needed for us to perform.
There you go. Can you go back to the instructions?
If it wasn't needed to, it wasn't, if it wasn't needed, maybe the county wouldn't have to just add it to the pay items.
It says right here, though, if you decide to bid on an item, it doesn't say you are required to bid on the item. That's why I'm getting hungry.
Yes, but the thing is, when you bid as a prime, you are supposed to bid on everything. Otherwise, the county, if needs to go and perform the job on an item that is not bid by their contractor, they have to incur more work and more taxpayer dollars to get a company to do that. So a prime contractor is supposed to cover all, as opposed to just what is convenient for them.
Madam Chairman, if I could ask the Board to finish your questions of the protester, then ask any questions of staff.
That's it from me. Any other questions from anybody? Okay, thank you very much. Staff.
Yes, ma'am. We have included on the first page of our, page of our specification documents that we reserve the right to award the lowest response of a responsible vendor by line item, and then we also put directly below that that we have the intent to award to multiple vendors. So that's very clear in our documents.
Okay. I'm looking to my board for direction.
Based on that information, I'll uphold, I'll support staff's recommendation.
I'll second that.
You'll uphold the administrator's determination.
Administrator's determination.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right. Now we are on to our afternoon agenda. Thank you very much, ladies. P 70.
Madam Chairman, members of the Board, we have proof publication of the hearing of this matter in previous meetings on May 7th, May 14th, May 21st, and May 28th, 2025, for at the last meeting on June 3rd. It was continued to today.
Nick Charles-Petos, Plank Development Economic Growth Department. Item P 70 is PDE 250166. This is an ordinance regarding the Two Rivers East Community Development District. We are requesting a continuance to the August 5th Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 PM in Date City.
Take a motion?
Move to continue time certain.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
P 71.
P 71, here again, similar dates, previously published, May 7th, May 14th, May 21st, and May 28th, in the Tampa Bay Times, continued from the June 3rd meeting to today.
Move to continue time certain.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. P 72.
P 72, again, May 7th, May 14th, May 21st, and May 28th, 2025, in the Tampa Bay Times, published. It was continued from the June 3rd meeting to today.
Move to continue time certain.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. P 73.
We have proof publication in the Tampa Bay Times, May 21st, 2025, supplemented by an affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Item P 73 is PDE number 250092. This is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to, to the future land use map, map 2-15 and sheet 23, from rez 29 residential nine dwelling units per gross acre to com commercial and OF office on approximately 5.78 acres of real property located on the north side of Pure Water Way, formerly known as State Road 54, approximately 680 feet east of Allen Road, and providing for additional text amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer or severability in an effective date. This comes with the recommendation to adopt the proposed comprehensive plan. This comes with a recommendation to adopt the proposed comprehensive plan amendment and ordinance by roll call vote, and there's a presentation if so desired.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Commissioner Waitman.
Just my typical live local.
Yes, it's in place.
All right, thank you.
Or will be in place.
There we go.
All right, Board, do you wish for a presentation?
No.
No.
Okay, let me try this. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against?
No, it's an ordinance, you need to take any public on that.
Okay, if you want to talk to it, for or against.
We have no one signed up nor online in advance.
Okay.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, and I even wrote roll call votes. Roll call vote.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District three, Chairman Stark.
Aye, P seventy-four, also a roll call vote. Maybe I'll remember.
P seventy-four, we have proof publication Tampa Bay Times, June fourth, twenty-twenty-five, supplemented by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
P seventy-four is PDE twenty-five zero-one-six-five. This is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map two-dash-fifteen and sheet oh-four, from res one residential dwelling units per gross acre to PD plan development on approximately nineteen-point-four-one acres of real property located at the south side of County Line Road, a tax amendment creating subarea policy flu seven-one-seven-four Pasco Mine PD, and a map amendment to the future land use map two-dash-nine, adding subarea map two-dash-nine-seventy-four Pasco Mine PD, and providing for additional tax amounts as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer severability and an effective date. This comes to you with a recommendation to adopt the proposed comprehensive plan amendment and ordinance by roll call vote, and there's a presentation if so desired.
Board members, do you wish for a presentation? I met with the applicant.
No. Chair, we're good on the local.
The local's there.
Thank you.
And, I think I talked to them about sidewalks, et cetera, up on County Line Road. Okay, so, is there anyone here who wishes to speak to P seventy-four?
Seeing no one, move approval. Second.
All in favor? Roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call. I was just testing you.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District three, Chairman Stark.
Aye. P seventy-five.
P seventy-five, we have proof of publication in the March nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five edition of the Tampa Bay Times, where it was continued at a May sixth, twenty-twenty-five board meeting to May twentieth, where it was continued to June seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five, where it was continued to today.
Item P seventy-five is PDE twenty-five zero-one-four-four. This is the development agreement in the name of Riverstone, formerly known as Renner MPUD. That was the name of the development agreement. This is a request to continue the item to the August five, twenty-twenty-five Board of County Commissioners meeting at one-thirty PM in Dade City, though the memo says August nineteen. The request is made by the applicant with PDE support, since this is a project in the middle of the county and is not changing anything as relates to density intensity design, land use, or anything like that, but is just an amendment to a provision of the development agreement.
So you're asking them to continue it to the Dade City meeting on August?
Correct.
Move approval for continuation.
This was at, was this?
It was advertised as a continuance, it was advertised for a different date. I, you can see, you can see if there's anybody in the, in the audience that wishes to speak to this.
Yeah, is there anyone here wishing to speak to this one?
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I mean, to continue it to a different district, even though it's advertised for a different date, I mean, I don't know if we want to.
Well, we're here in Dade City, so we didn't have an issue with it before.
So somebody thinks it's gonna come up to the nineteenth, and now this day show up on the nineteenth instead of the fifth, you've caused confusion.
Oh, well, there's that. County Attorney?
That's completely up to the Board, that's.
It wouldn't show on August nineteen. The only way it would show on August nineteen is if you continued it from here to August nineteen.
But it's advertised continued to August nineteen.
It was shown in today, in today's agenda that was published online as August nineteenth.
Right, so if someone looked at that and they, they just thought that, okay, it's gonna be continued that day, because it always is, now it gets shifted two weeks early, so someone may miss that date.
I don't believe that was on the agenda, per se, it's on our notes here, but the agenda didn't, it shows a continuation request.
The motion on the, the motion on the agenda item shows it for the nineteenth.
Yeah.
I think it was just sticked to the nineteenth.
Oh, this is about their obligations to the road, and how many houses have to be completed in time, so.
This was a project that was, the Board was the one that had the issue, not particularly the neighbors. It was, if you recall, this was the sheriff, Mr. Gad, and.
I'm okay with the fifth.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Wait, did I get a second?
Second.
I've had the motion, he had the.
Okay, and we.
Since we've been debating, it's, it's moved to continue to August, August fifth.
Okay.
At one-thirty or soon thereafter, as they may be here.
Correct.
Okay, P seventy-six.
P seventy-six, we have proof of publication of the hearing of this matter in the May seventh, twenty-twenty-five edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
Item P seventy-six is PDE twenty-five zero-two-zero-two. This is a development agreement in the name of Holmesby West Bay LLC. The request is to continue the item to the August five, twenty-twenty-five Board of County Commissioners meeting at one-thirty PM in Dade City.
Move to continue time certain.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. P seventy-seven.
Proof of publication, March nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five edition of the Tampa Bay Times for the May sixth, twenty-twenty-five Board of County Commissioners meeting, where it was continued to May twentieth, where it was continued to June seventeenth, where it was continued to today.
Which item you want?
Okay, I, I might have misspoke on P seventy.
One's the development agreement, one's the MPUD.
Okay.
They're both, they're both.
It's the same issue.
They're both Riverstone, Renner.
Correct.
So same issue that we had, both?
Yeah. Yes, so P seventy-seven is PDE twenty-five seven-eight-three-eight. This is a substantial modification to the Riverstone-Renner MPUD to reflect the same language that would be in the DA, so no other changes are taking place.
Okay, I see that.
And the request is to continue it also to August five, at the applicant's with PDE support.
Let's get a motion.
Move to continue time certain.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. P seventy-six.
Miss, Madam Chairman.
Oh, seventy-eight, I can't read. Looked like a sixteen.
Madam Chairman, would you like me to read, read the procedure?
Yes.
There are two rezoning agendas, regular and consent. Staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. If staff or planning commission has recommended approval and there's no opposition, the application will be considered by the Board without further presentation. If staff or planning commission has recommended denial, or if there's opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation, the opposition will be given three minutes for each individual, or five minutes for group representative, and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or planning commission recommendation, or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning, may at this time request that the petition be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address, and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi-judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is that mere public support or opposition of an application is insufficient for this Board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria found within the Board's Land Development Code for rezoning. Mr. Clerk, would you like to swear the public in?
At this time, we'd like to ask anyone who is, will go, and planning on speaking to items P seventy-eight through P eighty-three, P seventy-eight through P eighty-three. If you intend to speak to these items, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testament you will given these matters is the truth, so help you God? Thank you, you may be seated. When you come to the podium to speak, for the record, please indicate whether you have been sworn, that you've just accepted, and state your name and address. Please spell your not last name if necessary, we appreciate it, thank you. So for P seventy-eight, this was published in the April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five edition of the Tampa Bay Times, supplemented by certified mailings and affidavit of certified mailings and site postings, and for the June seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five meeting where it was continued to today.
Item P seventy-eight is PDE twenty-five seven-seven-four-nine. This is a zoning amendment in the name of Pasco Mine MPUD Master Plan Unit Development by K&amp;M Pasco One Thirty Holdings LLC. This is a rezoning petition from an AC Agricultural District to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development to allow for the maximum development of thirty thousand square feet of commercial retail, one-hundred-and-fifty thousand square feet of light industrial, and seven acres for a concrete batch plant and associated infrastructure on approximately nineteen-point-four-one acres located on the south side of County Line Road North, and one-point-two-five miles west of Suncoast Parkway. The recommendation, this comes with a recommendation to adopt the MPUD rezoning request, subject to the conditions of approval. There were a series of expartes that were submitted late for all the Commissioners. These have been given over to the Clerk's Office, and yes, there's a condition of approval that addresses the liblo collect.
Okay, this, Board members, do you have any questions? All right. Yeah, do we have anyone in opposition to this? This is on our consent agenda. Seeing no one, we'll leave it on our consent agenda. P seventy-nine.
P seventy-nine, proof publication for this matter in the May seventh, twenty-twenty-five edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
Item P seventy-nine is PDE twenty-five seven-eight-five-one. This is a zoning amendment in the name of Schatzberg MPUD by Ronald J. Schatzberg. It's a rezoning request from AC Agricultural to MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to allow for the development of twenty single-family detached lots and associated infrastructure on approximately ten-point-zero-nine acres located in the villages of Pasadena Hills within Village F. This comes with a recommendation to adopt the MPUD rezoning request, subject to the conditions of approval of the MPUD. Additionally, there were a series of late expartes submitted from the Commissioners, and these have been given to the Clerk's Office for the record.
Okay, Board members, any questions? Is there anyone here to speak against this item? Anybody online?
None online, nor, or signed in advance for the.
Okay, we will leave it on consent.
P thirty, or P eighty, rather, proof publication from the Tampa Bay Times, June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, supplemented by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Item P eighty is PDE twenty-five seven-eight-six-seven. This is a zoning amendment in the name of Swami AN LLC slash Wesley Chapel Professional Center. This is a change in zoning from a PO-two professional office district to a C-two general commercial, commercial district, south central, in south central Pasco County, south, at the southeast corner of the intersection of Veridian Way and State Road fifty-four, containing approximately point-nine-four acre. This comes with a recommendation to adopt the zoning amendment, and we have taken provisions to address the liblo collect in this case as well.
Okay, Board members, presentation?
No.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak against this? All right, we'll leave it on consent.
P eighty-one, we have proof publication Tampa Bay Times, June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five, supplemented by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Item P eighty-one is PDE twenty-five seven-eight-six-nine. This is a zoning amendment in the name of James A. and Cheryl L. Pelletier slash Powerline Road Rezone. This is a change in zoning from an AC Agricultural District and AR Agricultural Residential District to an AR Agricultural Residential District in northeast Pasco County, on the east side of Powerline Road, and approximately two-thousand-three-hundred feet north of Frazee Hill Road, containing approximately nine-point-eight acres. This comes with a recommendation to adopt the zoning amendment.
Okay, it's presentation? Is there anyone here wishing to speak against this item? Okay, we will leave it on.
P eighty-two, we have proof publication Tampa Bay Times, May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five, supplemented by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Item P eighty-two is PDE twenty-five seventy-eight-seventy-eight. This is a zoning amendment in the name of twenty-three eight forty-six, State Road Fifty-two LLC slash Duty Calls. This is a change in zoning from a C-two general commercial district to I-one Light Industrial Park District in central Pasco County, on the south side of State Road Fifty-two, approximately one-thousand-two-hundred-seventy-four feet west from Aaron Cut Off, containing approximately ten-point-oh-nine acres. This comes with a recommendation to adopt the zoning amendment, and there are liblo collect.
And I have a question on this one, so I'm gonna pull it off, consent.
Yes ma'am.
All right, I will take a.
Move approval, the consent agenda remaining.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, P eighty-two. When I passed by there, it's, it's already there, so what's?
This is, I believe, a result of court enforcement actions regarding the zoning on the property.
Okay, and so my question is, when I passed by there today, first of all, they have a chain link fence, it's not ag, and they put the landscaping on the inside of the fence, and not on the outside of the fence, yet again. So that fence is gonna have to go.
Madam Chairman, Clerk Hobby, Hobby and Hobby, PA, one oh-nine North Press Street, Tampa, Florida. Madam Chair, all good points, we are correcting those as part of the settlement agreement with the county, there'll be new landscaping.
It's looked beautiful, I saw it today.
Yeah, but the, the old fence that you're seeing is coming out.
Okay.
That's not allowed, and so we already worked with staff, it's all gonna be changed.
Okay.
We're actually doing a sidewalk.
All right, and the landscaping looks very nice, but I'm over seeing it on the inside of the fence.
Okay.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
Move approval, no consent items?
You already did consent, you're just doing eighty-two.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor?
It's not consent?
It was, but she pulled it off.
Okay.
Did I get a?
Excuse me, I lost that part.
Let me go again, did I get a motion?
We got a motion, in a second.
In a second, all in favor? Aye. Okay, well?
P eighty-three, have proof publication Tampa Bay Times, July second, twenty-twenty-five, and supplemented by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings, and we do have one person sign up.
Good afternoon, William Vermillion, Planning Development Economic Growth. Before I get started on this presentation, a couple items to submit to the Clerk's Office, ex parte communications, as well as proof of the neighborhood meeting with its summary and sign-in sheet for this project, as well as any emails from citizens that I received throughout the duration of the two years.
Move receiving file?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
This is PDE twenty-five seventy-seven thirty-eight, a zoning amendment, Evans County Line Eighty MPUD. The location map of the subject site within the North Market area at the intersection of Blanton Road and Lake Iola in northeast Pasco County. The current subject site is seeking rezoning from AC Agricultural District to MPUD Master Plan Unit Development to allow for the maximum development of three-hundred multifamily dwelling units to be platted townhomes or condos, a hundred thousand square feet of support commercial, and one-point-five square feet, or one-point-five million square feet of light industrial on approximately eighty acres. This is roughly point-three miles from the I-seventy-five interchange. A location map aerial of the subject site, its existing zoning reflecting agricultural, its future land use reflecting Employment Center. Here is an overall context map to show the subject site's location and relative to the future land use designations that surround the subject site at its interchange of Blanton Road and I-seventy-five. To the south, there are several pockets of residential nine indicated there by the blue color, the pink color, which is also on the subject site, is Employment Center, and to the south side of Blanton Road, you have the old mixed-use flu. And to the south side of Blanton Road, you have the old mixed-use flu, which is more intense than the current Employment Center flu on the subject site. Here's the master plan indicating the location of the warehouse, distribution, industrial office, as well as some of the support commercial. It also indicates the required scenic corridor buffer along Lake Iola Road shown in green. There's one variation request with this, with proposal from nine oh-one, six, D-eleven, to not provide an interconnect to the east or to the north. To the east, there's a category-one wetland and non-developable acreage, and to the north, there exist, existing single-family homes that are more rural in nature, and any further connection would provide a disturbance to them. So there were some changes when this, this project initially went to Planning Commission, when PDE, the applicant, and the citizens reached some agreements that everybody was happy with. Of course, the board heard the companion EDA this morning. The MPUD conditions will be reflected to update the thirty-year time period now before multifamily entitlements can be sought by this development. I know the slide says twenty years. The conditions will be updated to be consistent with economic development agreement. The rural cross-section being adopted for Lake Iola Road, as well as the additional right-of-way required for that cross-section is now a part of this MPUD. It wasn't originally in February. Throughout our subsequent agreements, before we received unanimous approval from the Planning Commission, we incorporated this as well. Additional buffering to be in compliance with the northeast rural were added both to the corridors, as well as to the buildings and the landscaping to the north. The MPUD owner also offered to work in good faith with any Employment Center master plan that's contemplated in this area. Originally, the comprehensive plan contemplated an Employment Center master plan for this entire interchange. And also, the applicant agreed to work with the county in F dot about any improvements to the I-seventy-five County Road Forty-one interchange. Gina, do you mind pulling up my revised PowerPoint, please? The one I emailed you. I just want to go over the rural cross-section typical. I know that there were some questions about that cross-section and what the hundred and thirty-five feet entails in terms of the typical section. This is the rural cross-section adopted in LDC six oh-four, which is the northeast rural section of the Land Development Code. You can see here that on this hundred and thirty-five feet, ample amount of room is given to landscaping and buffering. And on the, on the one side of the right-of-way typical section, there's the meandered five-foot sidewalk. On the opposite side, there is the option for an eight-foot meandering multi-use path and/or, at the time when this was adopted in two thousand and four, an equestrian trail, depending on how the environment was being built out within northeast rural at the time. So just to shed some light on that typical section there, multi-use path with the two thousand and four option of an, of an equestrian trail there that's indicated if you're looking at it from left to right on the right side of the road. This comes with a rec...
I'm going to have a question for you on that.
Well, I just...
Yes, sir.
I want to make sure, because we made a change earlier in consent item, dealing with this property, we changed from the twenty-year runout for the residential, and we moved that from twenty to thirty years.
Yes, sir, and that, that will be reflected in the MPUD conditions.
Okay. I'm going to ask Commissioner Oakley. How much more presentation do you have?
I'm available for questions now.
This kind of goes to Commissioner Oakley, because it's his neighborhood. And I know from the cyclists that I know that Blanton is a much-used road by the cycling community that come from around central Pasco to ride there.
The what now?
Blanton. Isn't this on Blanton?
Yes, ma'am.
And Lake Iola?
Well, this is Lake Iola, but it's an extension.
I know, but that's part of the route that most cyclists take. When we did the route studies, I don't, Stan Tech or whoever did the study.
You really don't see that many on this area, but you see a lot more down into Blanton going out Trailbee Road.
So is the, would the community prefer the cyclists to be off the road and on a bike trail than on the road?
Well, it's, it's safer for them to all be on a sub-trail rather than a road, so...
But it's not going to...
That's been some of the issues we've had.
Well, we're, we're having that, that RV park is having to build bike present. That's on Lake Iola, right?
But it's south of...
South.
So it's not near here?
Well, there's one, there's one on Lake Iola that, when it comes out...
Yeah, the one that was your sister's property.
Yes, that's in my district. So there's, there's a trail coming by the RV park, you know, the Moody Lake? As we come out, there's a trail provided there.
Yeah, and how wide is that one? That's kind of what I'm getting at.
I think it's eight foot, if I'm not mistaken. Jack, do you remember?
I just think they should be consistent, and I'm a little concerned that if we go from paved to dirt, it's going to be a problem. What, because this says either a multi-use path or an equestrian. The equestrian can go just right beside it.
This is your typical section. This is not...
But he said something about a paved trail or a dirt trail.
The equestrian path optional is your, from two thousand and four, is your typical section not necessarily what Mr. Two is going to be proposing?
Okay. Go ahead and fill me in.
Joel Two, Palm Harbor, Florida, land use consultant for the property owner. The property owner will build whichever of those options the county asks us to build. So if you want the equestrian trail, that's what will be constructed. If you want the multi-use path, we frankly think the multi-use path makes the most sense, that we want it to be a business park with hopefully some support commercial, and we're happy to put that bike lane either in that or in the roadway. You and your engineering department, just tell us which road section, because as Mr. Stein Snyder said, it's your, it's your requirement, and we're going to submit the plans and do it the way you want it constructed.
Well, I guess what I would ask is if it would be consistent with what we had the developer put in at Lake Iola, and I don't even know, at, at, further down the road.
It would make sense. They're both on Lake Iola Road. They're what, a half mile, three-quarters of a mile apart? So whichever you decide, you probably should require both.
Here comes the attorney that represented that.
Both locations. So we're, we're flexible.
Okay.
And for the record, so I don't...
They're on the east side of the road, so that makes sense to be a paved, walkable trail.
Yeah.
The equestrian trail probably should be on the other side, which they would not have anything to do with.
Right, could be done later.
Well, I don't know where they cross or whatever, but...
Yeah.
Barbaric coming up.
They're on the east side of Lake Iola Road.
And while I'm here, so I don't have to get back up, hopefully I'll agree for the record, the applicant agrees to the extension of the residential restriction from twenty to thirty years in the MPUD as we agreed in the development agreement this morning.
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's, that's my only issue. This is a pub, any other questions? This is a public hearing. Has anyone signed up to speak on this item?
Hi, my name's Scott Bland. My wife Debbie and I have lived at one-two-two Spring Lake Highway for the last twenty-six years. I have been sworn in. Thank you. So the idea that there's not a lot of bikes still running up Spring Lake Highway and Lake Iola, I'm out there all the time. I see a lot of bicycles.
Trying to get them off the road.
Well, there's like a thousand feet there in front of that eighty acres. You think those bicycles are going to run off onto this little multi-use thing and then run back onto the highway? That seems like a, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't do that if I were, if I were one of those people riding that bicycle. That's kind of crazy. There's very, very few horses, or as they like to say, equestrians, running up and down that highway either. There's a couple every once in a great while, but it's mostly bicycles up and down there, which runs into the whole traffic idea. But I did want to go, go to my, my written notes here. This is my third time attending one of these meetings on this subject and my second time speaking, so I'm still in opposition to dropping down this immense industrial area in this rural, this rural community. So all the reasons I had stated the last meeting and more, I, I would like to address a couple of the statements I heard during the second meeting. It was stated that they were going to have a small septic system running on the property. And it was also stated that a properly-run sewage treatment plant doesn't stink. Well, a quick drive down seventy-five past Wesley Chapel will show you that either that plant is not being run correctly or indeed feces does stink. I'm going to go with the second one on that. I also listened to a traffic engineer speak about how traffic wasn't an issue and how should it somehow become an issue. Some other government entity would fix it for everyone. Now, having been an engineer myself for more than forty years, I can tell you that the problems often lie in the details, or in this case, handy omissions. Somehow, it was admitted that the traffic on this road continues to increase as the population of Brooksville's immense developments finds this an easy shortcut to Tampa and back home. It was also admitted that the huge RV part that has been mentioned today is under construction just south, and that too will increase traffic. Add in the additional traffic that will come from the mega-development just west of Dade City. All of these projects are currently underway. This project will add on the order of, if we take the number of, number of residential units and all of the industrial and everything, call it something like a thousand cars and hundreds of tractor trailers per day. This road and its intersection and the bicycles on there, you're not going to have some bicycle lane, train, lane going all the way up Spring Lake Highway and Lake Blanton. It's just not going to happen. I can guarantee the developers and the traffic engineer won't be the ones waiting to be struck from behind on I-seventy-five as they sit at the jammed intersection. I ask again for the commissioners to deny the rezoning.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else?
No, that's the only one signed up, and no one online.
Anyone in our...
Yeah, and, well, is there anyone else here? Okay.
Anyone else want to speak? Seeing no one, close the public hearing.
Yep, we will close the public hearing, and it's back to the commissioners. You know, when I look at the map here, the RV park is on the right side of Lake Iola.
Yes, the east side, yeah.
We, we made them put a bike trail in front of that, and this is still on the east side as I go up Lake Iola. So it, I think it would benefit somebody for these, for these to connect. And also, I recall Spring Lake Highway, Hernando County, got state safety money to widen their road for the cyclists, because they encouraged the cyclists to come, and they, they widened that road so it would be safer for them. So there, there are cyclists in this area, and I know we won't get all of them off the road, but it'd be nice if we can get some off the road, especially kids, as this gets more developed. Commissioner Oakley?
So with the new, new RV park coming and, and that trail actually being on the east side of Lake Iola Road, it only makes sense that it would cross Bellamy Lake Iola Road going toward the Evans property up there, so that would be your trail that you put in.
Right, right, yeah.
And, and not necessarily an equestrian trail, because there's not many horses right there. There are bicycles...
There's room for both.
Going both of course, so...
But it just needs to be whatever width we said it would be at Spring, down, down south, needs to be at least as wide as that, if not wider. That's all. Okay, that's my own, my issue. Anyone else have any?
I have, I want to, I'm very much in favor of this project. It's much better than what it was three years ago, and it's come a long way to be a more fitting the area that we're talking about. So with the changes and all, the twenty to the thirty years, I'll make a motion to approve.
Madam Chair, I'll segue with just more discussion.
With discussion, sure.
I, I do think we should address the, the bike trail. If the other development to the south has it, we should mirror what that has as well.
Yeah.
So let's go to the motion maker?
Yeah, we'll make sure that, that trail goes forth, and it'll still be, you know, by the RV park, and we talked a lot about that. That trail's on the east side of the road, which is on the right-hand side. When you go and cross forty-one to the Evans, up by the Evans property, it'll be on their, their side of the property for the trail. So it fits in.
Yeah, and you may get some kind of user at the RV park, say that golf cart or whatever, that wants to come up to some amenity that they may put in here. So in this way, they're off the road.
All right.
Yeah.
That's good.
Okay. And just to the gentleman who spoke, remember, we're dealing with a lawsuit and a settlement, and so we have rules that we have to follow. And we just can't come up here and say no, that we have to follow the law. So with that, I'll call a quest, I'll take the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay?
Okay.
All right. We are back to, we finished all our Rs in the morning?
No. You need, you have a budget presentation on trim.
Budget presentation. You're welcome to stay. Just for my fellow commissioners heads up, Commissioner Jaeger has to leave at four. We should be fine. I have to leave at five, so just going to try and...
We have to leave at three?
Who?
You have to leave at three?
Oh. Well, Mariano, you could be running the meeting off by yourself at five.
I think it would be five. Commissioner Mariano, three?
All right. Fire away.
See how fast I can talk, five, two minutes. No pressure, Amy. Amy Farrell, Budget Director with Pasco's Office of Management and Budget. Item R sixty-eight or OMB twenty-five, zero, zero, four, eight, where we're going to be setting the truth and millage. In your packets in front of you, commissioners, you have a copy of the PowerPoint presentation, and then behind the PowerPoint presentation, you'll see the details for the five-year CIP excluding the general fund. The next bit of your packet is the details for the five-year Transportation Engineering Department CIP, and then your final grouping of papers is the Road Rehabilitation MSTU three-year plan, where we outline the projects by district, group by fiscal year. So just so you know, the packet in front of you. And so you have those details to peruse. Just wanted to make sure you had all those details behind those big summary slides that we're going to talk about in a minute. All right, so our agenda today, which I'll get through all of this in two minutes, it, it sounds like, or maybe thirty, or maybe an hour. So we're going to go over the budget cycle. We're going to talk about what we've already covered in this cycle, the work that we've already accomplished, and the work that's still before us. We'll re-ground ourselves in our strategic priorities that the board has set forth for us for this first year. We're going to talk about the assumptions and the pressures on our general fund and our other major funds, and we'll be looking at assessed value updates since the last time we met in June. We'll look at capital, and then we will approve proposed millage rates for the trim notice and set the first public hearing. All right, so in January, we came together, and we had a workshop where we talked big-picture strategic planning, so we have a nice five-year plan, but we really needed some guidance in what do we really want to tackle in year one. And then we heard your input, and then we went back and we kicked off with our internal team, and we started all of the heavy budget work that happens behind the scenes. We came back and we talked about the general fund, we talked about the municipal service fund, our various MSTUs, and we also looked at our big revenues for the upcoming year and what we thought those were going to shake out to be. In April, we workshopped with our constitutional officers and the chief judge to make sure that we had good line of sight on their budget priorities for the upcoming year as well, and we held a bunch of rigorous internal meetings to really kind of shape and form and malleate the budget that we're presenting to you today. In June, we workshopped again, and at that time, we had our June preliminary taxable assessed value numbers. And now we're back in July with final taxable assessed value numbers and to set trim. And then after this, we'll have two public hearings in September so we can adopt the budget. All right, so let's get re-ground in our strategic priorities for year one. Now, some of what you see up here, we're going to be aligning resources through the adopted fiscal year twenty-six budget, but we also have a team that's working hard on that Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Funding, which is also going to assist us in being able to move the needle on some of these items that we've been talking about this year. So community resilience and sustainability, reducing homelessness, access and availability to cultural, educational, recreational, and social opportunities, meeting affordable and attainable housing needs. meeting affordable and attainable housing needs, stressed communities, and supporting our small businesses and entrepreneurship. All right, so budgetary assumptions. So, now we're talking about kind of the revenue side of the house. And before you today for the proposed budget, we've got no change in the general operating millage, no change in the fire MSTU, no change in our road rehabilitation MSTU. And then based off of the heavy dialogue that we had in June, we are presenting zero mills for the parks MSTU, no change in the stormwater assessment. Next month, there'll be two rate hearings for the water and wastewater rates. And then for our solid waste, fiscal year twenty-six is the seventh year of our seven-for-seven plan. So, that is all baked into the numbers that we're presenting to you today. All right, so this slide is showing you our taxable assessed value and how that changed from our June one preliminary number to our July one final number. And in the general fund, after we look at the sheriff's allocation, the change in our payments to the CRAs and our increase in payments to our tax increment financing units, you're looking at roughly 3.84 million more dollars in abhorrent taxes in the general fund. That same increase in July looks like 1.8 million more in the fire MSTU than we talked about at the June workshop, and roughly 300,000 more to the road MSTU than what we discussed in the workshop. But as you all will remember, the property taxes is one piece of our very complex general fund, and so it's important for us to talk about that business rent tax repeal. So, while we had 3.84 more, million more in property taxes in the general fund, the business rent tax repeal yielded 7.2 million dollars less in half-cent sales tax revenue. And so, the big-picture impact here is our reserves are about 2.5 million less what we're presenting today than what we presented in June. And so that equates to roughly two days less of our operating in reserves. All right, so this slide is very similar.
So, it cost us, you said, your two million dollars less, and we lose, that's two days. So, it costs this county about a million dollars a day to operate.
In the general fund.
Out of the general fund. That's a new statistics I hadn't heard before. So, million dollars, okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, one question?
Yes.
So, the reserves, generally, what do they run? Like, what's our goal?
So, our goal is sixty days in reserves, and so right now, we're looking at thirty-four.
And it's because of the storms we just went through that our reserves have dropped down, correct?
Part of it is the storms. Part of it is we were already experiencing less in half-cent sales tax revenue than we were expecting this time last year. So, there were a few things that kind of got us to this point. All right, so the general fund, so those revenues we were talking about, how are those allocated to expenses within the general fund? So, you'll see the big piece of the pie, the purple piece, that's our public safety, which makes up our sheriff office, corrections, fire rescue, emergency management, those types of services, our 911 dispatchers. The next piece of the pie, that teal, that is that reserve amount that we were just talking about. And then if you keep coming, that blue one is our general government, which is facilities, our different administrative departments, information technology, those types of departments. If you keep going to that red bit, that's the other constitutional officers, less the sheriff, plus the Sixth Judicial Circuit and how we support them in the general fund. And then the last piece of the pie is our outward-facing departments, like our parks, community services, libraries, misdemeanor probation, those types of things. All right, so constitutional officer budget request. The one, so there's two things in here that are a little bit different from the June workshop. And so we'll start with the clerk's budget. So, you'll remember that she was requesting an additional position to the tune of 60,000 dollars a year annually because of the value adjustment board impacts with the tax bill that got passed. And so that is baked into her number. And then the second component that's different is the sheriff. So, based off the 11.2% taxable assessed value growth, his budget adjusted up likewise. But, good news, so the sheriff, as a fiscal conservative, believes that he can take roughly 2 million less of that amount that we have allocated to him. And he also wanted to say that he appreciates the funding that the board worked really hard to set aside for his helicopters, and that the state worked hard to help fund some of their critical capital projects. And so while that number is not yet reflected here, we will be making those adjustments as we come to for the first public hearing. Okay, and then this is our outside funding. And just a friendly reminder that anything that is bolded and italicized on this slide, our state mandated for us to fund anything that is not bolded and italicized are at the board's discretion. All right, and so this slide is by and large the same as it was from the workshop. The only update is with the homeless program administrator, we did get somebody on board, and so now we were able to kind of finalize what that recurring dollar amount is gonna look like, and so we have that up here. And then these are some additional initiatives that the county administrator is proposing since we got the July one taxable assessed value numbers. And so the first grouping of items, we're calling those by and large cost-neutral. So, either they're offset by revenue that will be generated, or expiring contracts, or for the most part, it's gonna be offset. And so we'll talk through those. We've got ambulance medical billers who should be able to generate more revenue for us that is gonna offset the cost of those positions. Our parks director had some expiring contracts, and so he's repurposing, his recommendation is to repurpose those funds to a SunWest Crew Leader and a Starkey Ranch District's Park, Sports, Turf Management. And then that last bit is where I say mostly cost-neutral. So, for project managers for transportation engineering, the majority of that, of those dollars are gonna be charged back to capital projects, but there's some overhead that we just can't charge back. So, roughly 10,000 a position won't be charged back, but by and large, the majority of the cost will be. And I don't know, Mike, if there's anything else you wanted to touch on here? Let's keep it moving. She says, and then, what did I do? Oh, now I went too much. Every time, I do this every time. Okay, all right. You know, I joke, and I said there's gonna be something silly I do. Well, we got to it. All right, so now here's our general fund capital that's being recommended for this year. You'll see the Hudson Library. The total cost is still at that 10 million dollar, but we did wanna be specific and talk about what of those costs are specific to the renovation bit, and what of those are, you know, just wear and tear on the building itself and some repair that we need to do, things like water intrusion in the walls, some roof repairs, there's a parking lot that needs some tender loving care. And then the board did direct us in June to add 3 million dollars to the park's capital maintenance budget. And so in June, that number for the park's maintenance was 1.253 million, and now you'll see that is 4.253 million. And then we did get an updated cost estimate for the sheriff's armory. All right, so change in our major funds. So, major fund, as defined by the statute, is a fund that makes up 10% of the overall budget for the county. And so all of the funds here listed meet that definition, save the tourism development tax, but that is a, that's an important fund for our board, so we always do like to come back and talk about it. So, some general assumptions that are in the proposed budget, we've got wage increases are in there, retirement increases are in there, general inflation, and then also any new initiatives that are being added to those funds. And so we have a couple slides after this one that'll outline what some of those initiatives are. All right, so I'll just touch on a couple of these. So, looking at our building inspections, our team is adding two mobile permitting trailers, a few positions, and some software enhancements. Our county transportation trust fund is adding some vehicle equipment, landscape maintenance, and some positions. Now, by and large, what you see on this slide is our county and our departments keeping up with the work that they're already doing, and just making sure that we're able to really meet those demands for service. So, let's see, stormwater management, same thing, adding some vehicles, equipment, and a small number of positions. And when we get to the solid waste system fund, again, vehicles, equipment, minor positions. And then you'll also notice that they are working through their master plan revision just to make sure that they are teed up and ready to go when they come back to see what are those needs when their seven-for-seven year plan expires. All right, and then our water utility fund. So, by and large, what you see on this slide are positions to meet growth and some studies to make sure that we're, you know, prioritizing our resources in the right spot. All right, so big picture, our five-year capital improvement plan less the general fund because we had those called out. And again, this is one of those beefy handouts that you all have in your binders. But looking at a 1.7 billion-dollar budget, you'll remember, I'm sure, this time last year, our five-year CIP was about 1.8 billion, so we're still roughly on par with the same kind of growth that we've been experiencing. And then we are taking this transportation line here, and then we have broken that out by the different types of categories, how they group those projects, so looking at landscaping, big-capacity projects, multimodals, so things like sidewalks and whatnot, signals, streetlights. And then again, this is another one of those packets, and it's pretty beefy. So, all the, I'm gonna get this wrong, nitty-gritty details. I might've gotten it right, but I might've gotten it wrong. But all the details are in your packet. All right, so we've got two slides here that show millage rates. So, this one, state statute requires us to show you how we compare to the rolled-back rate, but we also wanted to take a second and just talk about how are our proposed millage rates compared to our current millage rates for 25 adopted. And so you'll notice where we talked about we're proposing no changes. But then when you get to the general obligation bonds, so the way these work is that we have a millage that will generate the revenue we need to pay our debt service and the interest payments for that year for those bonds. And so because we've been experiencing some growth, you take that same number, you apply it over more taxpayers, and then it actually turns out to a slight savings to each individual person. So, just taking a moment to educate, kind of how those general obligation bonds work, that is a call that our office fields quite often about this time next month.
That's awesome, they're going down.
All right, and so here's the state statute, how we compare to the rolled-back rate, which, a reminder, that rolled-back rate would generate exactly the same revenue, for the most part, as what we received in this year. All right, so we're here today to approve our proposed millage rates and also to set the first public hearing for Wednesday, September 3, 2025, at 5:15 here in Dade City. And when the board does do this, both of these will be published on the trim notices that will go out in August. Any questions, or do we want to move to approve?
Move to approve? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Not very time, not very good time.
Okay.
Sixteen minutes to spare.
Wow. Commissioners' items.
I was close.
What is it?
Your turn.
I gotta load up my picture.
My turn? Okay, we're gonna talk about, we're gonna talk about a large tree out here next to the World War II Memorial. But first, I'm gonna show you this film of a tree over by the government center. Or the courthouse, yeah. So, we'll watch, if you watch the, as it moves, you'll see what happens. No wind, clear day, and it's gone. Show no issues of problems with the tree, but as you noticed, it toppled down. Good thing you were not sitting there eating lunch at the table there, so.
So, a question?
That happened in 2022.
It doesn't look like there was any maintenance done on that oak tree. No thinning?
Maintenance.
Yeah, you have to trim, trim these up, oak trees. I mean, that, that branch looks super heavy. Did anyone ever do anything to trim that up a little bit?
I don't think so, I think it's just, it was just a tree. It had no issues.
Well, I think, I think it does look like someone...
So, if I get Andrew Baxter to step up here?
Someone took care of that tree and loved that tree.
And so we'll go back to what, what this is talking about is, I have been very concerned since I've been elected as commissioner here in District One of the tree that sits out here by the World War II Memorial. We've missed, having real, we've had issues over the years because several limbs have come off that, that tree, but none have fell on the World War II Memorial. The tree, we have found out through an arborist back probably seven, eight years ago, is dated as somewhere between 200 and 250 years, that tree. And according to that arborist back at that time, said it was near its end of its life, that tree. I got a call that a tree limb had come off of it during the storm, all the storms we had, we were very lucky. A huge tree down Meridian, closed Meridian after those storms because it toppled over. It was as big or bigger than this tree. But I had a limb come off this one that was about eight or 10 inches. It just so happened to fall on the west side of the tree and didn't cause a problem with our World War II Memorial. But I have a great fear of the fact that that's gonna happen. And with another storm season coming up, I think, it's been a while back, maybe. Andrew can give me a little history of when we all discussed this before about a new landscape around the courthouse. If you can do that, Andrew?
Yes, sir. And as regarding the maintenance of trees, we do our best to maintain all of the trees on county properties. Obviously, we have a budget that we have to live within. And there's a reason that we are aware of this tree because we did an arborist report on it eight years ago and took action to ensure we are maintaining our trees as best as we can. And yet, still, a catastrophic failure occurred. And so, last year, when this event occurred about three years ago, last year, we, we started talking to each of the board members individually about, hey, this tree failed catastrophically. We have a similar-aged tree here on this campus, but there's a critical asset that we have that's right next to it that's historic. The bandstand and this building are registered historic places nationally. And we want to ensure that we preserve those historic resources. And so a discussion was had with each member of the board to, how would you like to proceed? What are some of the options that we can look at to ensure that we consider the age of this tree? Considering the previous arborist report, again, it is seven to eight years old. And then ultimately, last summer, we all agreed, and I think Commissioner Oakley, you brought it back to the board, and there was ultimately some consensus to move forward with the plan. So, we've been doing that. We have contractors lined up, and we were about ready to begin the process of taking down this oak tree. And that's when Dade City decided to pause that permit that we had sought. But then there was some other discussion that's happened since then, and really what we're looking for is the way forward.
But, and the reason I'm bringing it to you because the Dade City Commission brought up that the tree looks great, all this, and they feel like there's no issue with the World War II Memorial, but I have a different opinion that we have to worry about the World War II Memorial. I have several family members' names on that memorial. about the World War II Memorial. I have several family members' names on that memorial, as, as a lot of people around this area have. I don't want to see it destroyed. So, but according to the — when it came up at the Dade City Commission here not too long ago, when we applied for a permit, the word came out, well, it's only because Commissioner Oakley wants it down. But I, I wanna believe that all my commissioners in Pasco County wanna preserve that World War II Memorial. So, that's why I brought it to the day as today, to discuss with you, because you are a part of this, and you've been a part of it since we've been talking about it over the last few years. But, I mean, we're lucky at this point that it hadn't already happened. So, it could happen any day. So, during the last storms that limb came off, we were lucky during these past storms we had this last summer. So, we're faced with that coming. Actually, the rainfall and all, and the event we had with weather yesterday was some tornado sightings in this area. We could have had that come down yesterday. So, that's how critical it is to move forward, so. But I wanted to bring, y'all get your interpretation, get, get how you feel about it, so.
Um, my only issue is that I wanted it to be replaced with another oak tree, but you don't wanna replace it, or that's not the thought?
After meeting with all the commissioners—
I always said I wanted oak trees back around here.
Understood. After meeting with all the commissioners, there wasn't 100% consensus on what the landscaping plan looked like. So, we tried to create a bridged landscaping plan that was, that met the majority of everyone's needs. We shared with the, the board that we have a lot of oak trees around the property already, and we also shared with the members of the board some of the historical photos of this campus here around the historic courthouse, and that there used to be many sable palms on the property, and currently, there are none. And so, it was, and I also showed that that's something that's traditional at many other historic courthouses around the state. And so, we thought that that might be an element to bring back onto the campus. It was part of the history of this campus, and we thought that would be a good idea. Additionally, there were some other ideas about oaks and magnolias, and we've tried to do our best to incorporate that into a universal plan that does the best to provide for this campus.
Do you have a picture of that, of what your plan is, so the public can see it here?
If I could share, Andrew.
Sure.
A little bit of hysteri — historical now, background, hysterical, too. When I was city manager here in Dade City, the tree canopy became, was very precious to a lot of folks. And right after the storms, the next year, that made spaghetti out of most of the power lines, why then, there was a concerted effort to do something about it. But back in the early 90s, Dan Johnson, who took my place as Assistant County Administrator for facilities or over facilities, had a plan to rework the canopy around this building for a uniform canopy that would have developed over the years and whatever. And again, it got sidelined at that time because of concern for the stately trees. But again, we have had concerns going back that far above that tree, because it has a very limited area of soil for that size tree and being able to get. So, it's, it's interesting how long that tree has stood, but like many of us, time is catching up.
Oh, yes.
Right.
Yes, sir. Thank you for that history, appreciate it, Aaron. And so, you can see what the proposal was there, and this is what I shared last summer with all the different commissioners individually. The two trees that are, were represented by those big orange dots, those were removed by Dade City due to concerns along 301 about two years ago.
Did they replace them with anything?
They had came down.
They, they came down. Now, the one to the—
During the storm.
They took them down, and they didn't put anything else up in its place?
No, ma'am.
They didn't get rid of the stump, I don't believe either.
The one to the north was important that it, that it went away, because that's now where the Peace Officer Memorial is. The tree highlighted in blue, that also needed to be removed so that we could accommodate the Peace Officer Memorial. The tree highlighted at the yellow dot, all the ones in white dots are trees that remain on the campus. The tree highlighted in yellow, when we did our arborist report seven or eight years ago, that one was, that one was diseased and needed to be taken down. Their recommendation was take it down immediately. So, that one is, is, has been taken down several years ago. There's a vacant spot. If you look over there, kinda where the, the row of trees are, there's a vacant spot.
Well, we got money, we're ready.
We, and that was part of our replacement plan, was to potentially put a magnolia in that area to represent some southern charm, and that was some of the feedback that we had gotten. And then, to, if you can go back to, the red dot is obviously our large stately oak that is sentient. It is at the final stage of its life, according to the arborist report that we had done. What our proposal was—
Andrew, the fact of it is, before we do take it down, we're gonna reach out to a third-party arborist and get his report based on what our findings are so far.
I think it's, I think it's important to not be in conflict, like Commissioner Oakley, I have family members' names on that memorial by Brian Holmes.
No, I'm out for protecting the memorial.
But I think, I think to, to, to have a good partnership with the city, that we, we ought to do our own independent arborist report, just to see—
We're going to.
And then, what, then what, that, that answers the question, and then, you know, if we're getting real back into the, into the weeds, Commissioner Shive, I'm sure he's reached out to you, too. Obviously, he's, he and the city have concern about where they can do their Christmas tree lighting, so I think it'd be good, you know, have, make sure they have a spot that they can do, do their annual Christmas festivities, however that lays out in, in partnership with, with the city.
I don't, we're not gonna affect the spot they've been using for their Christmas tree out to the front left here.
Okay.
So, there's electric there for them, and it's there, so.
So, ultimately, we're, we're, we're sort of committed to this plan that we've already sort of established. It's now, with Dade City putting the, the permit on pause, we've come to understand that there's actually an exception. But that's really a determination of whether the board wants to move forward. What we propose to do is to do a third arborist report, one that is funded by Pasco County, represents us as the owner, and try to determine what the best path forward is.
Okay.
But that's the right way. So, everybody's, we're above board, we're not keeping secrets. I'm not gonna take that tree down without y'all knowing. I mean, this is all our campuses as commissioners here in Pasco County, so.
I, I just can tell you, when I go to a parking lot, and if there's a spot open and under the shade, I'm gonna take it.
Yeah, most people avoid it.
And I'll wait for it if someone's walking to their car around and get them one across from it in the sun.
Yeah, most people don't want that dropping on their, their cars.
My Porsche goes right under the shade tree.
I agree.
Any further discussion on this?
So, I think we're fine. We, we just need to move forward and get that third-party report and go from there.
I just wish you would replace it with another shade.
Hopefully, the tree stands while we're doing this, so. I think time's of the essence, so.
Absolutely. We'll, we'll act quickly.
While you're up here, do you go around, and I'm gonna show a picture of my commissioner items, but are you, do we have someone who looks at our trees and thins them properly so they live long and healthy?
Yes, ma'am.
Especially important was that around the courthouse.
Yes, ma'am. Well, based on—
Is that one, that one should not have looked like that, that was over by the other courthouse?
Yes, ma'am. We, within the budget capabilities that we have, we do our best to maintain all of our trees at all of our campuses.
Well, he has nine-point-something million budget capabilities that we learned of today.
Apparently, I'm gonna have less money now.
I think that historical, I think that historical look of, of the courthouse going back to like it was in the 30s or 40s, with some of the sable palms and things of that nature that are, that's a state tree, that was a very nice look. And when Andrew first showed me that picture, it's pretty amazing.
Yeah, I think Gina has that right now for the historic, some other courthouses around, and even our, our courthouse campus from those historic photos that we, that we had.
He means the, um—
Yeah, so, these are other courthouses. This is Jefferson County. Here's Citrus County. It's interesting to look at that Citrus County one, because you can see when they first planted those palms to what they are today. It's kinda a fun look. You know, and then that's what we do at our other courthouses. Here's our Robert D. Sumner Judicial Center and our West Pasco Judicial Center. And then, finally, here's, here's the campus, and you can see multiple sable palms and, and other palms around the courthouse.
I see lots of oak trees, too.
You know, that, that one has 51 on it, and I, it's hard to tell what date is on that top right corner, but I see it there. I don't know if Gina, you can read it better? Yeah, but historically, obviously, palms are a tradition.
Yep.
And it's something that, not, not only do we want the—
It's a historic courthouse for a reason.
— the majesty of the oaks, but we want that, that Florida feel as well.
Yep. Mr. White.
That's all I have?
Great. Mr. White, you—
I have nothing.
Commissioner Jaeger.
Okay. This was a home dedication for the Golden Family, Habitat for Humanity. This house was gorgeous. It was, was this a three or four-bedroom, guys? Four. This was a four-bedroom house. Absolutely beautiful. They are buying up lots in Newport Richey and Port Richey, so that was really neat. And this was our, we had, we partnered with the Health Department, with Trang and her team. We did a wellness fair out in Moon Lake. We had vision and blood pressure checks. Matter of fact, we had one lady, her blood pressure was so high that they wouldn't let her go anywhere, and she had to immediately go see the nurse.
Oh, great.
I wanna say with the mammograms, I'm trying to remember, I think we had 14 mammograms done that day, and normally, their numbers are a lot lower than that for an event. We had the dental bus, but sadly, they had to leave early because their generator went out. We had HIV and hepatitis C testing. We had mosquito control, WIC, and we had Grace's Food Pantry out there giving out food. So, it was very much a success, and we are gonna do another one in the fall. Moffitt was there as well, and I wanna say they had six people sign up, you have to sign up prior for lung screenings. And they said they could be at an event all day, and they may have one or two. So, they were really, really happy with the, with our numbers there, so. And I wanna say they had like 10 shots given for hepatitis, so, yeah, it was a great, successful event. So, and thank you to Trang and her department for doing that, and her volunteers, they were there on a Saturday, and we had so much help. So, it was great, and we're gonna do it again, so.
Great. Commissioner Mariana.
I got a few pictures. We had a couple of ribbon cuttings, I'll see which we get to. That's just a picture of a county I was at where, I suggested we did this years ago.
Yeah, see, these everywhere. We don't do it, huh?
Every time we should have a trash vehicle, trash, there should be a recycle item next to it. And we should start with our parks, our buildings, and then let it go from there. But every, every city, you kinda see, that's what they do. I've actually given John Batista at the FAC conference, who was a person who had those exact things. I took a picture of the brochure, sent it over to John, he's, he's working on that for us as well, to bring us something back. But I think it's something we should get back to it and incorporate that. The more intense we do with recycling, the more we save the landfill, the more we save the burn and make it more efficient. So, we need to, I think, step our game up a little bit. And that, that was a picture from 20, that was, you see that picture? That was from 2020.
Oh, wow.
I had more recent ones, so it's not the first time I've talked about it, right? All right, next pictures. There's a groundbreaking in Hudson across the HCA Hospital along the trail at 5A that we just had done. Part of the reason this got funded was that trail was like the last missing link as far as like connecting. It connects to shopping, it connects to a library, and now right along the hospital, so that was a, a big trigger. That's phase one of three, and they're going all the way down to this, 30% AMI.
Who's this, Ken?
Ecos.
Oh, okay.
McDowell, McDowell Development, I believe it was.
Yeah.
They partnered with Truist Bank. That project's been, again, phase one, they'll be looking at phase two and three coming up. But again, your low-income people, like we say, wanna take care of, this is gonna take those seniors that don't have anything more than income, as far as just a social security check, can afford to look at. It's gonna be great. The next picture, we had the Merrill Brothers, which I will tell you, people that look, are looking at this, are looking at Pasco County as being brilliant for, for taking this step forward. I always say, as good as the waste energy plant was, this is getting looked at. The bio-solids, it used to be really expensive, we were looking at this years ago. And I'll tell you, Merrill Brothers, a family-run company, very well, very, a lot of smart people. They have now got, I think it's 80 employees down here in Pasco County, but are looking to do more, like more of this around, around the state, around the nation. And the more they do it, I think it's a better offer for everybody. But gonna show a couple more pictures, kinda just show you the trucks they got, maybe not. Maybe it's all they got. Anyway, it was a great ground, great ribbon cutting for what they were doing. They are now bagging their bio-solids, so they're gonna be able to sell to Home Depot and Lowe's, et cetera, which we share in that revenue, and that will even cut our costs down more.
Great picture.
Coming up here, we got the scallop music festival starting July 24. We've got, the American Stones are kicking it off, and at the same time they're there, we're gonna have Point Distorre there as one of the sponsors that'll be there. They'll have their own product that's out there. And if you don't recall, the Hurricane Rum that the Rolling Stones sell internationally is made right here in Pasco County, right near 52 and Little. They got a new test, tasting room they're looking at doing, should be great. We've got a beach volleyball tournament coming in, we've got a scallops splash race, a 5K run, be going all around, all the way around. We've got a carnival that's gonna be coming in, and we've made it really economically to make it so it's affordable for kids to go that don't have much money. Matter of fact, Commissioner Simpson has helped with sponsor with that. There's gonna be a US water ski team that's gonna be out there. They'll be out there the first Sunday and the next Friday, next Saturday, Sunday as well. You can see the list of sponsors. A lot of these people that do work in the county are giving back to make it so it's free for everybody to come. So, not only the Pasco residents, but also free for everybody else to come in. All you do is pace the parking and away you go. So, looking forward to that to be a great kickoff as well. Let's see, one more picture?
And you're getting starkey seltzers donated.
Starkey seltzers, yes. The strawberry lemon coming?
Yeah.
Oh, that's the best.
It's really good.
Really, really good, yes.
Put a little wine in it, make a wine spritz, seltzer spritzer.
And that's all I got, thank you.
So, you guys double down, huh?
County Administrator.
Really, just one, one thing. It struck me as we were talking about all the art, dawned on me that our library's team, in conjunction with our employees, again, we're doing another successful year of the Pasco Perspective, which is where our, our employees and their families generate art, various, various mediums, and they're on display now in the West Side Government Center. And so, I just encourage you to, to take a look, check it out, some really interesting stuff that, that's been put forward, and thanks to our library's team for kinda running with this and making it such a success. So, you'll see that, I knew it was gonna be a few, about a month before we're there, so I wanted to mention it, if you're on that side of the campus. That's all.
One of you, too.
Hi.
Okay, county attorney.
If, if David will come up, you were all given a copy, emailed a copy on Friday of Mr. Goldstein's memo on Senate Bill 180 and what it potentially can do to fire rescue impact fee, as well as a whole lot of other ordinances. I'd like David to kinda walk through his memo with you all.
Yeah, so, Mr. Moore kind of briefly touched on Senate Bill 180, but, and he, he was correct, that it does potentially prevent you from adopting more restrictive or burdensome land development regulation amendments, conference of plan amendments, moratoriums, or any additional procedures that would impact issuance of development orders or permits. The reason, the primary purpose for the memo is that this, what Mr. Moore did not cover is that there's a Section 28 of that bill, that actually is the more problematic part of the bill, because it's retroactive to land, land development regulation— part of the bill because it's retroactive to land, land development regulations that you've already adopted after August first of last year. And it prevents anything from being more restrictive or burdensome until October first of 2027 for the entire state of Florida. So it's not just within a hundred miles of where the hurricane landed. The entire state of Florida is prevented from adopting more burdensome or restrictive regulations from August first of last year until October first of 2027. That's in section twenty-eight of the bill. Mr. Moore covered section eighteen that also applies, but that's for a year after the hurricane makes landfall and only within a hundred miles of where it makes landfall. So the problem with it being retroactive is that it applies to, potentially applies to land development regulation amendments that you've already adopted. And just by way of example, that would include the car wash ordinance that you adopted in September of last year, invasive vegetation, there's a few others. But the one that really needed some immediate attention is the fire rescue impact fee because that was due to affect, take effect on July one of this year. So we temper, after Senate Bill one eighty got signed by the governor, we asked for it to be, implementation to be put on hold until we could get some feedback from the board about how you wanted to proceed. Now, I will tell you, this law is not a model of clarity. It does not define what more restrictive or burdensome means, so we don't know what it means. It is not clear about whether it applies to properties damaged by hurricane or if it applies to the basically all development that occurs in the county. So, you know, there's a lot of ambiguities in it. And I don't know if those ambiguities are going to, are going to be resolved either through litigation, maybe the legislature will fix it next session. It's my understanding this, this, these provisions of the bill were added at the very last minute to this emergency management bill. They were not part of the bill going through the whole process. And so there's very little opportunity for Florida Association of Counties, for legal cities, our own lobbyists to get ahead of this one because it got added at the last minute. There was a big push to ask the governor to veto it, but I think because it was included in an emergency management bill that had otherwise good provisions in it, the governor was reluctant to veto it, so.
I'm looking at these, you got three options on here.
Three options, and they're probably listed in terms of most aggressive to least.
Number one for me.
Yeah, so one, one would be probably the most aggressive option. Three is the most conservative option. One basically is we let the impact fee take effect. And then if somebody goes to
But not, not on new construction.
Not on anybody that was
If it was damaged by the hurricane.
Anybody was damaged by the hurricane. But let me, let me be clear. Even under, before one eighty was adopted, we likely would not have assessed an impact fee to somebody damaged by hurricane because there was already an exception in our ordinance for, for replacement structures. So we don't assess an impact fee on a replacement structure anyway. The other thing that's interesting about our impact fee is we use it to respond to hurricanes. So this is to buy our fire rescue vehicles that we use during a hurricane. So, I mean, if I had to defend any particular ordinance against one eighty, this would probably be it. It's probably a good poster child if we have to go to litigation because it's so important for public safety purposes. So I'm not sure the legislature realized that they were impacting public safety when they put this in the bill, but for us, it is impacting public safety. So option one of the three is basically says that we would allow the impact fee to take effect. And then if we get anybody challenging it, we, county attorney's office will defend it and can't promise you whether we will win because it's an ambiguous, ambiguous law. I don't know what a judge is going to decide. There is a little bit of a risk that we'd have to pay attorney's fees if we lose because that's also in the bill. So there is some risk associated with one. That's why it's probably the riskiest option. Two basically says we allow it to take effect and if somebody either sues us or gives us notice that they're invoking the act, then we come back to the board and ask you what you want to do. And then three is probably the most conservative option, which is we just defer the increase until October second of 2027 or a year after the last hurricane has made landfall in Pasco County.
Who's good for one besides me?
I'm good for one.
I'm good for one and Madam Chair, I think just because this, I think we started this fee, what, twelve years ago, fifteen years ago? Hadn't increased it?
We have not increased the fire rescue impact fee since two thousand, since it was originally adopted in two thousand and four.
Four, okay, so twenty years.
Yeah, we're good.
So heaven, so it can't be burdensome. It's been expected. I think, I think number one's the way to go. I'm going to make that motion.
Well, we, we owe it to everybody that, that does that job, that they not need to be worried with what Tallahassee's doing. Let this board take the hits with them. That way they can keep doing what they need to do to keep our folks safe and healthy.
Madam Chair?
Motion?
Second.
Motion second. And I think, just add a little more comment. I think we've been appropriation, Chair, send it up there. It would probably be very, very helpful in trying to get this amended to make sure that it doesn't hurt us if it does come up.
Okay.
Okay, so is that, do you need a, a motion or just more direction?
You might, you've got a motion in a second. You might as well take a vote.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
I hope you defend that, that car wash ordinance with the same vigor.
(laughing).
Otherwise you're coming with me out of the mountain in the world and you'll understand.
We have, we have some good arguments ready to go, so.
And I, and we, we escaped this with the parks fee. We are out of the window.
Park impact fee was prior to August of the last year.
Okay, um, you know, we talked about a law enforcement or whatever we're calling it, impact fee.
Well, let me be clear. We talked about the stuff you've already adopted, but even stuff that you have pending is potentially subject to one eighty. So you got, you talked about the comp plan update. We've got, you know, other regulations that are kind of making their way, backyard chickens, covers over docks. I mean, any amendment we do to our land development regulations, I guess there's somebody that could argue that it's more restrictive or burdensome, so.
We, I, Chair, I think we just need to keep moving forward and governing ourselves and do what we were elected to do and what the people expect us, the decisions that we need to make. And then if someone challenges it, they challenge it.
Yeah, and we'll tell them why.
Yep.
We will let it be known why we are being challenged.
The, the finesse point of the, of the law really is we don't know that just by exempting stuff that was damaged is going to be good enough.
I know, but we're willing to test the waters.
But, so there, there might be somebody who challenges any of these regulations based on the fact that it was a declared state of emergency and you can't, you can't do anything. But we're willing to take.
We were a county that waived our building fees, paid for our houses to be demolished. We went over and above, so I feel we're in a good, good place.
Okay, we have direction. Thank you.
And I think when we have our, our legislative discussions, we're going to talk about counties who, who are finished, finishing or just finished their comp plan revisions in this year should be exempt from some of that stuff. So I had discussions with our legislators at lunchtime.
Well, what I'm hearing the board say is you want to just keep doing business as usual and we'll litigate it.
Yeah. We don't want you guys to stop working on LDCs or, you know, tee everything up and we are gonna keep moving on.
It does seem to be a conflict when they tell you that you have to do an, an evaluation and appraisal report and then say you can't do anything with it.
You know what? We could, we could ask our development community if they want no more complianz plan changes for the next two years.
Well, interestingly, it does exempt privately initiated plan amendments. That's the one thing that is exempt. All right, thank you for the direction.
Thank you.
Anything?
Anything else?
Thank you.
Yes, Turk Alvarez Souls wanted me to call the board's attention to item N one oh seven, which was just a, an example of working together with the inspector general's office, providing part of their work plan and working with utilities to verify the accurate implementation of new, new utility rates. And through testing through their extension partner, Corvus Mazars, they did find some areas that needed to be cleaned up. Utilities took care of that. And as, again, it's just cleaned up the house a little bit and was a positive experience and work together between the inspector general and, of our office and utilities. So just a, a positive thing that we can do. It's not always, it's not intended to be gotchas. It's how can we help? And it worked out well.
Great. Okay, is that it?
That's it.
All right, I have some, well, I guess we'll start with NACO. So I recently attended the NACO conference. It was in an interesting city where they had to cancel. I always do the NACO bike ride and it's an early morning thing and they didn't have one in Philly because they said it was too dangerous. So I was, I was kind of interested. But one of the highlights was our own Gavin here winning intergovernmental relations official of the year. Gavin won that. He's with FAC. And that's me in the upper picture, talking to General McChrystal. Is that how you say his name? McChrystal, who used to run JSOC. He was our speaker at our board meeting, board of directors meeting on leadership. Very interesting man. And I talked to him about initiative I've had for a number of years at NACO to make it easier for the spouses of military families to be able to work in multiple states. Because my daughter is a, a PA and every time they move, which sometimes one year, sometimes two years, she has to go through this whole process to be able to be a physician assistant in that state. And it takes six to eight months. She has to get a letter from everyone she's worked at and it's just crazy what some of these military families go through. So he was appreciated with that. I didn't really take very many pictures. Do you have anything else to add to NACO? Oh, yes, this is FAC. This is Derek Berger getting an award. When he was my assistant and we'd go to the FAC conferences, he would take classes and get his points towards filling, fulfilling this education program. And he was able to come over, finish up and get his award this last week, so, or two weeks ago. That is the CGE designation. It consists of a total of forty-five hours of coursework. Gosh, Jack, your, your staff should be able to get that. Consisting of, let's see, diverse range of courses such as growth management, financial management and ethics, elective courses such as affordable housing, emergency management and resiliency. So that was very good. I, on the way home from FAC, I stopped at a, a Publix in Orlando. And, yeah, they put, they put oak trees in theirs and we put crepe myrtles. And it was so hot in Orlando. And when I drove in that parking lot, it was so refreshing to drive into the shade. There's, there's some more pictures from there. But this is what, this is what I was talking about to Commissioner Oakley, who looks like he's gone. But they're trimming their trees and they're thinning them out so that they grow healthy. And, but it's, it just looks so much better than what we have. So as you're driving around the county, take a look at our development and look how we really have so few of our tree canopy left in the developed areas. I spoke at the Bama dinner. I think you should have a picture of that, maybe, maybe not, which is the Bay Area Manufacturing Annual Dinner. And then I have a few other notes. So I mentioned to you that this upcoming year, and I don't remember what they call it, is the two hundred and fiftieth year of, of our independence, when we declared independence. And almost all the counties that I talked to have something planned. So I thought we should start thinking about something. And you know those video machines that we got? You know those ones, those, those ones that were, yeah, so I got one and the county got one. You can project a movie or something three hundred feet to thirty feet in perfect quality. They're laser. We could, we could have fun with those around the county showing, showing, you know, interesting historical things. That's just something that came to my mind. But I'd like for you to assign someone, she might be sitting to your right, to be thinking about what can we do to celebrate in a special way our two hundred and fiftieth anniversary? And y'all be thinking of, of things.
It, it might be good if we could collaborate with the cities and all work together, whether it's one side or two sides.
I was thinking downtown, for routine.
And incorporate some of the fireworks. You don't like fireworks.
Let's not just leave it to the cities, though. Let's, let's participate.
No, no, meaning like ask them to, to partner with us.
Yes.
It's not probably going to be a cheap endeavor, but there's, I think it needs to be a whole, at least the offer needs to be made and have the whole county involved.
Let's, let's decorate up the county in red, white and blue. I was thinking we could each do a part of reading the direct Declaration of Independence.
Light the buildings up?
Huh? Light buildings up, you know?
You want, you want to make a motion?
I don't know if we're allowed to put banners on poles on State Route fifty-four and fifty-two, you know, some, some bunting, whatever. But let's, let's think about doing it up. No, I think that we want to come, you to come back to us with ideas.
We will come back to you with a Suster Centennial.
Is that what they call it?
That's what it's called.
Okay, yeah, I, I can't remember that. All right, and I, I've got a very big issue brewing in my district and it's going to touch both of yours. And that is the lack of playing fields. Before it was Little League baseball, but now it's flag football. And, yeah, it's bad. But we just went through a, a procedure that our county put together for four different leagues, which included Pop Warner or Powell, I'm not sure which, and NFL league and two others on who would get to play like on one field. And they, you know, they ranked and scored and the, the team, they picked two teams. Actually, one gets to play at Mitchell, one gets to play on a field at Starkey. And the team that was founded by a, a mom in Starkey Ranch, actually, I think, a, a flag football team from twenty twenty-one with four hundred girls is out. No fields. So imagine the calls and texts and things that I'm getting. And Keith and I have been racking our brains on what can we do? I've got, I talked to Commissioner Flowers from Pinellas County about the property they own on Trinity Boulevard. Can you, can he go to Google Earth up there? If you could go to the Pinellas-Pasco County line on Trinity Boulevard. We've, we've touched on this before, Mike, about their property, but Commissioner Flowers is, is again going to try at their Thursday Board Workshop in Pinellas to see if at our expense, we could put some fields in there and some lights and maybe we'll have to bring a porta, some porta potties. But it's land that Pinellas County has, Pinellas County Utilities, that they are not using. They, you know, I asked if we could buy it and they said, they said no, right? I mean, you were, you were leading those discussions. I don't know what their issues were. Okay, go to, up here to the, upper right there and zoom in. Yep, over, over, right, see it right there? It's all upland. It's, nope, you went too far. It's that, that area right there, right there. Zoom in on that, please. This is Pinellas County Utilities land. I think they were going to use it for water treatment facility or something. And it's, would be, they don't use it. They mow it. They have a very nice entrance. I'm just trying to see if we can throw some ball fields on there, even if it's temporary. We'll take the liability, whatever it takes. Commissioner Mariana?
I've got another idea for you because you mentioned Mitchell as well as Trinity. And if you're talking my district, I'm not sure where it comes in, but I know we're talking about doing something in Magnolia Valley.
Yeah, but it's years away because of the environmental permits.
I, I think you've got that old driving range that was right out front. You got a golf course that was right there.
That's got the arsenic on it, that driving range, right?
I don't know, but I, I think with the land space you've got there, if you put enough topping over it and you put the field over the top, I think it'd be all right. I think that would probably be an ideal site to actually go look at doing that. And maybe, as you say, to try to make that happen with what you've got going on right now, that's probably the quickest, simplest, easiest way to get something done.
If, if we could do that quickly, but I think they're out for bid again. Who's, who's here from, is, who's your ACHA here that knows about this issue? Where's Branford?
Branford would be the one that's on vacation, so I don't know if Kevin Pliscus really got the, the, the.
Okay, well, I just had a meeting with some of those guys and talked to Keith about this and my understanding is they have to go, they're going back out to bid, that it's got arsenic on it and they have to get Army Corps approval before they can even start the, the water, the, you know, the storm water project. We went through this at Gulf Harbors with the arsenic. That's what held up us closing. And get this, this And get this, this is where some of the rules are so crazy. We can't even put a tennis court, like, an asphalt pad over it because we have to go back to DEP because there's a little level of arsenic underneath. Like, well, it seems like if we're putting concrete or something on top of it, like even a clubhouse, no, there's arsenic in the ground. So I said, people are going to go out and eat the dirt underneath the clubhouse? I don't understand their rules. But we finally gave up trying to fight it. So I think, Jack, that would, I mean, look into it, but I think it'd be longer than you think.
Another suggestion I had, I talked to Keith about, was at Mitchell Park, we have the back 40 there.
The what? It's real what?
At Mitchell Fields. We have the back 40 where there's really nothing. I mean, kids use practice there. And then the field across from the soccer field, it's small, but it could definitely be used for, like, for kids, like, flag football, you know, things like that.
I think one of the fields that this league is going on is at Mitchell. I just, we just don't, we don't have enough fields. I got a league with 400 girls, they give college scholarships for flag football, there's four, let me see, I think it's 34 teams that now are out.
Why, if the county's going to take responsibility, and the board approves, impact fee increases, why, what's the hangup with the school board allowing us to use some of their facilities? I know in the summertime, they're concerned about different things, but I feel like this is an unprecedented time. The county's grown 20 years younger within the last six years. They see it, they're in the youth business themselves. We have a new administration.
I can answer that.
And I tried when I was on the school board.
So I can answer that. I just recently asked Keith to pull up all the areas that were lacking in parks that were near schools, and I have them, I have the two, the school board and Keith, talking to see how many more schools we have opened up. I think, don't put me on this, but I think they're working, they have seven right now that are opened, and we're talking about opening more schools. And they have, they're, all of them are elementary schools.
So this is, and I tried to, I tried to get rid of those fields when I was school board member. It's up to the principals.
Are they kind of, is the school, well, there's a hierarchy in the school system.
Yeah.
So you're saying the school system could potentially be open to the county taking liability and paying them to...
We already, we have that agreement now, and we have that...
We have a master agreement with the school board that could add fields, but I think the chair is right.
I know, I've been down this road many times.
Up till now, they have left it up to the principals, and there haven't been very many principals that...
And they don't necessarily want them with lights on and open at night.
But my angle is to try and make it more of the superintendent's decision instead of the principal.
Yes, that could help.
Because we're in need as a county, and all these, everybody pays taxes.
Yeah, that's public land.
Exactly. So these fields should be open.
I know a legislator who might work on that.
Yeah. Anyway, so we are actively working on that, Commissioner Rayman.
Yeah.
It would just be a wonderful thing, I mean, it just always just scratched my head as to why in the summertime and others, it's, yeah, public facilities that are closed.
It's not right. It is not right.
Agreed.
I grew up playing on those fields.
Well, there's new superintendent in town.
Yeah, there may be a new opportunity.
Great idea.
Okay, so...
Not a new one.
The last one I want to say is, it's funny because we heard from our legislators, but I know our county administrator was at the FAC meeting, and we heard some of the talk about dozing us, and that we were too heavy with employees, and they were putting numbers up there of employee growth, and then, and then we had one of the top guys from Lennar, I don't remember who else was on that panel, saying, counties don't have enough employees, it's taking too long to get permits, you know, so they want us, you heard it today, they want us to increase our service, but they're going to cut our budget with this property tax thing. So which way is it? I'm very, I feel whiplashed.
No, we formally got dozed, right? So we start the process? We start the, your memo, your memo about the floor, but when do we start our process Didn't you send Mike a memo about...
I sent an email to the board. We're complying with all the state doze requests that come out, absolutely.
There was a commissioner, I think it was from Manatee, who asked that question, just, he did it much better than I did, but, yes.
I think we saw a lot of AI at the FAC conference and NACO, big, big topic, what's going to happen. So putting a policy in place, I think we've done that already, is what we need to do, so we're ahead of the game there. But there's opportunities through the state, I think if you have a population base of nine, about a million or more, that you can get some money to go actually set up AI as well. So I think we need to look around us and kind of join forces to go put a project together because it'll only help us anywhere, the better the region does, the better we all do. So I think if we could, maybe David, you could reach out and let's have those conversations about how can we tap into some of that state money that got allocated for AI? Could give us a free program and help us out.
Yeah, and I did send back some of the transportation grants that we talked about, and then I was researching further while I was sitting there, and I don't think we've applied for any of those. So we need to get with our lobbyists and make sure they're earning their money, and they need to point out some of those transportation grants that we should have applied for and that we could apply for. We missed a deadline on one. And that reminds me, I want to make sure that rolling grant that's coming out, that I told you about, that the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council is allowed to go for, but we are too, that federal one, we need to be applying for that. Yes.
Three years ago, working with them, we were talking about baffle boxes like Indian River Randy Fine, we had them apply, and they had to do a special way to do it, they had to include regional planning council and the estuary, combine it together, but had to separate them out. They get a total of 9.5 million, and they've now allocated the first chunk to the estuary, about, I want to say around $2 million. We can now go put our plan forward, I think we're working on it right now, right, Mike?
Sorry, I was making some notes.
I think we're working on money right now for baffle boxes, litter traps through the regional planning council right now that we're going to submit a plan due to try to get a big chunk of that money. We'll be the first ones jumping into it.
All right, because there's, well, I'm not going to try and look it up, I'll send it again, but it came from Mike Matthews, who used to chair, used to be the lobbyist for my committee at NACO, and he's the one who sent that grant to me. The NOFO had come out that day, and it's a rolling, it's a rolling grant till the money's gone, and we just, if we don't apply, we're not going to get any. Okay, yes.
Madam Chair, if I can have one take back, or I missed one, I was remiss in, and you reminded me in your presentation, Mr. Goldstein was given the Friend Award for the Florida Association of County Attorneys.
Oh, yeah, he...
For his work on Live Local. All right, so I...
Thought I needed to bring that to the board.
And I did get to see some of his presentation.
Yeah, I missed it.
Which were very well received.
I ran in there, you were done.
He's up there with the whole room, and he's giving a whole pitch on us, so great job, David.
I, we also won an award at NACO, and I didn't have the whole list, but we won an award for our Bay Care opioid mental health project. We won it at NACO, and we won it at FAC, so, great program. Okay, with that, we are adjourned.
All right. Waterways and wildlife depend on you to keep them healthy. Excess fertilizer, grass clippings, trash, oils, and pet waste wash into gutters and storm drains when it rains. Stormwater carries these pollutants directly into our lakes and rivers, creating an unhealthy environment for fish, waterfowl, and other aquatic animals. Storm drains are meant for clean rainwater. Most other discharges are illegal. If you suspect an illicit discharge, please contact Pasco County Department of Public Works at 727-834-3611. Here in Florida, we're no stranger to rain, and Pasco County Public Works wants to show you how we're working to improve drainage along your roads.